Tonight's the Jefferson Township Board of Trustees' regular meeting via Zoom. Today is Tuesday, February 16th, 2021. The time is 7:00 PM. Let's go ahead with the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. This time, I'd like to have a moment of silence to honor our military, firefighters, road workers, and sheriff deputies as they serve our community here and abroad. A thank you roll call, please.
Trustee McGuire, do you want me to do roll call?
If you want.
I mean, you could call my name if that's what you want.
Okay.
Trustee McGuire.
Present.
Trustee Mann.
Present.
Trustee McLaughlin.
Present.
Okay, and we have Chief Wright. We have Administrator Wolf, Assistant Chief Wilcox, Fiscal Officer Edwards, and User 10034312. And Linda, Linda Rowley, I believe, in the meeting. It's saying Linda's iPhone. Okay. First order on the agenda is review and approve. Trustees, I had a discussion with our counsel on McLaughlin versus Jefferson Township and was advised not to approve this set of minutes because they were brought forward by Mr. McLaughlin.
I brought them forward because nobody else would do it. I was just doing a job to get us out there.
Okay.
So do you have that? Do you have that report from legal in print to make it public, to make that public record?
If you want to do a public records request to our attorney for what she said, that's fine with you, Mr. McLaughlin. Okay. We do not have a motion to approve the minutes or a second, so we're moving on to old business. Any issues of old business? Okay, seeing as there is no old business, moving on to new business. We're coming back to the...
How many McGuire? That, those minutes are scheduled in temporary to permanent budget on the old business. I know we set a meeting date in the work session, but they're listed in there. Do you want to put that in? Do you want to state that date again?
For the temporary budget?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
They're under old business.
I've got the old business. The copy of the agenda I have is blank under old business.
Really? What you have on the new business?
The new business, I've got one, the Fire Station 6D Bay Heater Repairs and Replacements.
There's three, I got three things under that. Wow. I don't know if my agenda is page two. So I'm assuming that this is the most current one.
That's not what I have, and I'm running the meeting.
Okay, fine.
So what are the other two issues on the new business?
RFP, the same thing we talked in the work session. RFP, the Fire Department Rescue Tools and the State Audit Business.
Okay. All right, let's go with Fire Station 6D Bay Heater Repairs and Replacements. I believe this is just something we can do a simple vote to approve the repairs trustees and then sign the purchase order. I make a motion. First, and replacement, what was the total on that again, Chief Wright? Exceed $5,000. All in favor, say aye.
We're not going to do questions?
Aye.
We're not doing any questions?
Okay, with the next, okay, then I was just going to do a simple vote. Let's back up. We'll make a motion to adopt the expenditure for Fire Station 6D Bay Heater Repairs and Replacements. If we have a second, we can open this up for discussion.
I'll second the motion.
Okay, we have a second on the discussion of the Bay Heater Repairs. Go ahead with your questions, Trustee McLaughlin.
How many bids do you have on that?
We only had, we got two, only one showed up.
Thank you. That's all I got.
Okay, I move to approve the expenditure for the Fire Station 6D Bay Heater Repairs based on the current information the fire chief has, has. Roll call, please.
May I ask the question, please? Will I get that information for the township records?
Yes.
Trustee McLaughlin.
Yes.
Trustee Mann.
Yes.
Trustee McGuire.
Yes.
Chief Wright, do you have, have they told you when they could come out and do the work?
I'll try calling them here in just a couple minutes.
Okay. Can you have the purchase orders available for us when we come in and sign resolutions and everything? So we can have a PO for you?
Sure.
Okay. Second order, new business, is the extrication equipment. I'm just going to use, it was the opening of an RFP for rescue tools. This is going to be a new item under new business. Mr. Wolf? Can you open the bid award?
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Great. Okay, we had advertised, according to the Ohio laws on the RFP, we received one bid proposal under the request for proposals. An outside package, it was received on the 12th of February, 2021, 11:00 AM, from How Rescue Systems, 2673 Culver Avenue, Kettering, Ohio, I will open the package. Two items in the bid package. There's the proposal and a binding book and a Genesis Equipment Book that shows pictures and information. It says Genesis Rescue Tool Bid Proposal Prepared Specifically for Jefferson Township Fire Department Dayton, Ohio, submitted by How Rescue Systems of Kettering, Ohio, Curt Shawford Regional Sales Manager, How Rescue Systems, Inc. Inside, on the front page, is our RFP, which was advertised, and on our left side as well. With a breakdown of package pricing for each individual item that was in the bid. It's very extensive. Also, a list of references of the customers that How Rescue Systems has serviced this kind of equipment in the past, the Genesis Rescue System, the WNI for the fiscal officer, the insurance certificate for the administrator, and the records, and the Ohio Bureau of Insurance Comp Certificate, which is everything that we asked the bidder to, the proposal, to submit. The only thing I see is there's not, there is not a total package price on the package. They're broken down per item. So there is not a total cost that I can tell you what is there. It does have some stipulations that prices are due through April 30th, 2021. Their delivery is 90 days or less. Terms of the payment is net 15. We're going to have to work on that with Mickey Smith, our grant writer. FOB Dayton, Ohio, no shipping fees added to the invoice. And then he has a full training of this equipment at their charge as part of their package. I mentioned in the group session to trustees about the step that we're going next. But what we will do is for the fiscal officer, Tracy Edwards, we will have a full copy of this for your records along with the RFP, a package together. There's two steps now. Step one will be the package goes to Chief Wright for evaluation. Step two is the package goes to Mickey Smith, our grant writer that you hired to manage the grant process, to make sure that the grant process follows the American Firefighters Grant Program. If at any time through this process, this, something in this bid process doesn't meet the national standards, Mr. Smith will let us know that. And that's why you're not voting on anything tonight. There's a step and a process to an AFG grant. In the past, the township maybe not followed all those steps as we've discovered. But we have to make sure that going forward in 2020, any purchase made by the township is a federal purchase, and you have to follow federal laws. And that's where Mr. Smith and his expertise comes in. So he will get a copy, the chief will get a copy, and then, and maybe because of the timing, it'll be next meeting, chief, that you want to come back to the trustees with a recommendation. My suggestion here is, don't wait till the day of the meeting. The trustees need time to look through these packages, all three of them. So please, I'll work with you, and we will work with Mickey Smith on this to see if this is compliant with AFG. That's all I have.
May I say something, please? During this process, whatever goes to the trustees in any process should come for the township records as well.
I agree. I agree.
Okay, any other discussion on the rescue tools? All right, Fiscal Officer's Report. You have the floor, Ms. Edwards.
You're not going to mention anything this time about the State Audit Business? Because that's not on your agenda, correct? Okay, so...
Why don't you go ahead and just incorporate that with your report?
Okay, so, again, we had a pre-planning meeting for the audit that's going to happen for 2020 this year. They plan to get done on about the 15th of April, so they think they can get all that done by then. They're going to focus on mostly the coronavirus stuff. Since we got that money for coronavirus, we were told several times that that's what the auditor is going to be focusing on most. Because they want to make sure, they're going to focus on that. They're going to do offsite. Right now, they're going to not be onsite doing the initial stuff. So in about two weeks, they're going to start the audit. I guess they've been pulling some stuff now. They're going to start the audit, and then they'll let us know. They said they're going to let us know every two weeks of the status, you know, where they're at, and when they're going to let us know when they're going to be coming into the township to start looking through the records. So I think we may have to notify, usually Adrian is involved in that because of payroll, and Steve, and of course, me, and then they have to contact several other people along the way. They'll eventually get to the trustees as well because they have questions for you guys, too. So that's basically the obligation is to do the same thing they've been doing for the past. Like in state government. Trustee McLaughlin, you have anything to add?
No.
Okay. Okay, so I'll continue on. I sent you guys a copy of the financial report for this, for this period, for this meeting. It's just for the temporary budget. So this stuff is all pretty temporary. It may change, it may not, depending on what you guys approve for April 1st. But April 1st is really the big date for when these financial reports will be mostly accurate. With everything going on and the lateness of approving the budget. I know there was something else, and I can't remember what else I was going to say. I can't remember, there's just so much going on right now, just a lot of work I've been doing to try to get us to close it out of last year and get us up to speed on this year. Lots of delays, lots of work, and now we got to start the audit, so just a never-ending process.
Well, I never saw the engagement letter. I need to, we need to, you kind of moved on to the report without the audit.
The audit, they won't have an engagement letter until next week, I think. As she said, I think that she did say that in the meeting today, they won't have it. So the audit is going to be like, she estimated it was about $13,202, the last audit. She says it's going to be around that, again. So we can look at putting that in the budget if we got to redo it. But if we're going to redo the budget, so about, I'd say put like 15, just to be good, say, on that. So we have some cushion, but she thinks it's going to be, and that also depends on if there are certain things you want them to look at. She didn't think, she meaning Sylvia, didn't think, and I think it was Sylvia, it might have been Amanda, but they didn't think it was going to be much more than that. $13,202 is the exact number she gave us, so... And that would be an engagement letter, which she said she's going to try to get out by the end of next week. I think I remember her saying. Any other questions? No, I'm done.
Trustees, would somebody like to make a motion to accept the financial report and pay the bills and invoices?
There was something else I wanted to say. I apologize, Trustee McLaughlin, I mean McGuire. McLaughlin, man, McGuire, 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 okay. The, Mr. Wolf, I was told by Mr. McGuire, you are holding three of the tax duplicates that I need so I can send the taxes that I do the 19. You have three of them, he said?
I was given copies, I don't have the originals.
I don't have the originals either, so I'm wondering where they're at.
You know what the addresses are, we can call the auditor and get the original, you know, another, another group can get sent out.
No, because I didn't see them. They went directly to, they went directly to Trustee McGuire, but I know one of them was the, he said he was holding that one, big one on Soldier's Home West Calton Road. I'm assuming that the other one was, there was one for the fire station on Germantown, I think. These are what I'm assuming, and they are. I don't know for sure, but one was Germantown Fire Station. And there were some other properties, but I don't know what they were, but that... So I need to know how I'm going, I can't keep track what my issue is, is how can I keep track of these type of things? If they're going into, they went into, I seen the email that Ms. Jones sent out. She sends out those things when she gets in the mail, and I seen they went to Trustee McGuire, and so I know that's where they were. I don't know where they went after that, but they, he had them for over a week. And these, the due date is Thursday. Trying to get it, there's 50, I think there's 50 some, I don't, I have a list, though.
Here's a suggestion that we could solve the problem, Tracy, is we get together, you and I get together and look at what you do have, 30 or 50 or whatever, and I write all the address addresses down, and I go to the auditor, and I ask the auditor which ones are missing beyond the ones that you have.
I have, well, Trustee McGuire says he scanned them all in. I didn't get that scanned yet, and if I got that scanned, that would probably help. Did you scan all of them then, Trustee McGuire?
I scanned in the first batch of mail that was in the drawer, there was a bunch of big packets. Last three never got scanned in. Lighting assessments that showed up, that basically, we're getting billed for assessments on our own lots. There was a mowing assessment for about $440 on one.
And there was lighting assessments.
And the fire station bill, I believe that was in the packet that I gave you. It should be scanned in.
Well, there was one in there, but the other one wasn't. One of them was in there, there's two properties that Germantown has, and one of them was in there, but the main address is not, not in there. So I know that was only a dollar, so it's not a big thing. I just want to make sure we, it's in the records. I don't need to get it from the township, but I need to have it in the records. So somewhere it's in the township, somewhere somebody needs to come up with it. And we need to figure out a way, as trustees, you guys need to figure out a way about this mail for these type of things and other bills, because if they come in, I see them on the thing, I need to have them right away because there's deadlines on these bills. DPNL, Vectron, those type of bills immediately need to be paid or we get... Now, we need to pay all our bills on time, no doubt, but there's some we get penalized, and big penalties if we don't pay them. Some aren't as big, but penalties are penalties, as a penny saved is a penny earned. You don't need to keep wasting pennies here, and it's our money that we're wasting, you know? So we need, we need to try to get these, as soon as they come in, do something. If you don't know what to do with them, ask somebody. Nobody bothers to call me, nobody bothers to call me about financial things. Maybe, maybe Mr. Mann, maybe Trustee Mann, maybe Trustee McLaughlin. Steve does not call me on these things, Jim, you do not call me, rarely do you come. If you don't know what to do, ask somebody. Ask your fiscal officer. If I don't know, I will find out. That is why I'm here. Ask me, you get, and then you make the decision. That's what I'm here for. Because now, you know, here we got these bills, I'm going to go ahead and send these in. Steve, I know you put money in property tax, I'm just going to go ahead and pay these.
We did it together last year and this year to make sure we had enough money to cover it.
And we have enough, we have enough, because that one bill is taken out. I want the trustees, you got, I'm assuming that Mr. McGuire is going to work that one on Soldier Home West Calton Road. You spoke to me about that last week, and I'm assuming you took it to somebody to work that one. So I'm not going to bother with that one.
Well, you told me that you never have paid that in the past.
Well, I have paid it in the past, but I didn't pay it last year.
And it's my understanding they're working on a deed issue, what the prosecutor's involved, and is that some of Mr. Calligan's working also?
I don't know, I don't know.
Mr. Peterson is working on it. Trustees, if you did not have specifics, the township served a home on West, Servants on West Spencer Road through the, the... Purchasing it was to put it in his own name immediately as a vicious exposure for years until we entered this, because a tax bill that the township has held liable for on this property the whole time, that the deed was never given, transferred to this. When we interviewed the gentleman, it was the first month I was on the job, he didn't have the money to pay the taxes and transfer the property, who had already lived there for four years for free. There's no rent. But the deed was transferred, I mean, Jefferson still holds it, but he paid his money through the program, so technically it is his, but the township has to send the debt with him. So I don't know, at this time, that's all we have to share because there's nothing else to share. But the township has a huge exposure of someone living in a home on the property that, that you still have in your name, and you're getting no benefit from it, but you're showing up on the tax bill as unpaid taxes. And that's mainly why the spend a lot program was closed down by trustees for these kind of problems.
So if, if we own the property, is it our responsibility to get the deed transferred?
We don't know that, that's why we, Tracy, that's a very good question because legal counsel asked that question. Do you have any copies in the records about this property, Tracy?
Only thing I would have is, is where he may have purchased it through the, what did you call it? Spend a lot program. If I have that, I'd have to search it.
Tracy, if you could maybe look for it to see if you have it, that would be very important. But one way or another, trustees are going to have to settle this situation, one way or another. Because you can't have somebody occupying the land that you own with federal liability on, but no insurance, and the gentleman is living for free.
And on top of that, there's a huge penalty getting put on that. And eventually, if he backs out of it, that'll go onto the property, and who we're going to be able to sell it to at that point in time? Who's going to want to take that property with that big amount of money on it, the taxes? There may be somebody, but it's going to be harder to sell.
And Tracy, you're fairly right. The other problem is we have huge nuisance violations on the property. Not just wrong, and we, we can't, you know, it's, it's very confusing about how it got to this point with prior, you know, administration before I got here and you trustees. And we just have to fix it somehow, some way.
So back to the issue, um, we're gonna leave that one out. The other ones I think were all a dollar, if I remember, so they're not a big thing, so I'm gonna go ahead and send this tax in. Um, I'll send everybody a copy that's involved. Well, I'll send everybody, the trustees, the fire, you have, Steve, you have the road and the general, I'll send you all copies of the spreadsheet I have, I don't have the... If Mr. McGuire, if you would scan, send me the scanned copies, I'd appreciate it.
Okay.
And then I could send everybody copies of this, 'cause it takes a little while to scan this, because that's what you already done, and no need for me to take the time to do it. And I'll send everybody a copy of this package with my spreadsheet on it, so you guys know what's been packed, if anybody ever asks you. And I'm gonna try to get this up, and it'll be in the mailbox hopefully tomorrow. Uh, but if not, uh, have to, we're gonna have to just get it in as soon as we can, and hopefully we won't get a clue on to you. And again, like Mr., um, McGuire said, there's seventeen properties within light assessment, I fixed it for the next time we submit our assessment, whenever that will be, you guys will make that decision. Uh, I can't do anything about the mowing thing, 'cause I'm not involved with the mowing. Whoever's involved with the mowing will have to look up this property, and, and you guys will have a copy, and it will say on my spreadsheet mode, and you guys will have to talk to, I think Tony McKee does though, uh, you know, Steve, you know?
Right.
So he'll have to take that one off. You'll have this list, and from now on, this'll be the list we use if we lose a property, sell it, or if we gain another one, we can add it to this list. Say with the land bank or something, whenever they say we're getting out of back, see, we also have those bills on the land bank we have to pay property taxes on, and I'm still waiting for that, um, response back on those invoices. I can go ahead and pay those, Steve, if you want me, if they're all coming out of the general fund, I don't know. You didn't reply back to them, but we have to pay those, uh, the land bank, um, the land bank taxes too.
Well, uh, we have old land bank property that they didn't take care of it, and we moved it, and, and they wanted that relieved.
But didn't you fill a separate invoice for that?
Well, you're gonna be getting a separate invoice from them, 'cause they went ahead and paid it. We're gonna bet us for what they paid.
So that's one we're gonna have to, I'm gonna have to get that, um, parcel number and make sure we get it to Tony to take off.
Right.
Um, I'll put there as one of our properties.
The trustees now, and Tracy, I'll include you, uh, it wasn't because of didn't want you to have it, and just never thought about it, they, they give out an inventory report to all three trustees, I sent it to them once upon.
Okay.
It shows what the land bank is holding, and that's the list Tony will have to use also to make sure we don't put assessments on their properties.
Were there any of them lighting assessments on them, or any of them?
None of them.
Because I need to know if there are, because I need to take those off of my list as well.
Mm-hmm.
Okay.